Sacramento County. And we work on multiple issues. We basically help everyday people put their faith into action and to look at whatever issues are plaguing their communities and develop innovative policy solutions and figure out how to address these needs at multiple levels. So we often act as a catalyst, kind of bringing together different systems and different partners to help kind of address these needs. Sacramento Act became particularly interested in violence prevention issues in 2005 when there were some gang-related homicides in Sacramento. We launched a big campaign called the Stand Together Campaign with many different clergy and young people and community members who were really interested on how do we tackle this big issue? Our philosophy is that those most affected by the problem are best equipped in how to solve the problem and looking at solutions to address it. So our mom starts with listening and sort of surveying the community. And early on, we did massive sort of community surveys and one-to-one conversations with young people around this issue. And the number-one solution that they proposed was youth jobs. And over the last five years, we've continued to be organizing and working in congregations with young people. That still remains the number-one concern, which is nothing stops a bullet like a job, which is one of the great oil of Homeboy Industries in L.A., as we've wanted to say. We actually brought them up here a couple of years ago as well. So I would say that from our perspective, the two important pieces that are missing from young people's lives today that are contributing to this problem is a lack of relationship and a lack of opportunity. And so the campaign, the Stand Together Campaign that we launched was broadly looking at what can we do around these two questions? How do we increase sort of the number of and the quality of relationships that young people have in their school, in their community, in their church or congregation? And then how are we creating more opportunities for them to really grow and succeed in school, in their career? How do we give them that sense of hope, that sense of possibility, so that they see other options available to them rather than the gang world? Our Stand Together Campaign has focused on then multiple different specific sort of policy issues. One was around increasing mentoring, and we were able to get a city policy passed to allow time off for city employees to be mentors to young people. We worked directly with youth ministers and a bunch of different congregations to really strengthen their youth ministry programs so that they could do a better job at supporting each other and connecting with young people. We also worked with the city, as was mentioned earlier, by the police department to develop the student attendance centers, that were really looking at what are the root causes of truancy and how do we address those? And how often that is a piece around sort of opportunity and relationship in terms of what's going on for those young people who aren't in school. That program has been incredibly successful, bringing in over $400,000 to SacCity Unify just in particular since it began in 2006. Money that came back through increased attendance. And there were great statistics on reduced crime based on student attendance centers too. And then we've looked a lot at the issue that was also raised earlier, which is graduation rates and how critical graduations are in terms of our ability for young people to be successful and choose a different path. And we've looked at a couple of different approaches around increasing graduation rates. We've developed the Parent Teacher Home Visit Project, which I know you're familiar with, which really looks at how do you help engage parents in their children's education and build a real partnership between teachers and parents in a non-punitive way, in a kind of a prevention-focused way that allows parents to start to understand what their child needs to be successful and teachers to understand the challenges that are in the home, the different barriers that the student might be facing to being successful in the classroom. So we've worked hard to expand that model in a bunch of different districts in the county. It was formally funded from some state funding a few years ago that really allowed it to expand. It'd be wonderful to see funding for that come back to schools down the line when things are looking a little better. And in addition, we've looked at also this, you know, how do you use those home visits for that transition time between middle school and high school to really prepare incoming freshmen for being successful and parents for understanding what they need to do through high school to be successful? At Luther Burbank High School, where we've done a fair amount of work, we've worked to do both those incoming freshman home visits as well as visits for juniors and seniors to either make sure that they're going to be able to pass that KC High School exit exam and to help them prepare for college. So many students who even are prepared for college don't go due to the fact that their families just don't know how to navigate the system. So home visits can really be that kind of relationship piece that can help different transition points for students to kind of make it over the hill into a more successful and opportunity for them. And then, as you well know, we've been really interested in how do we get a permanent source of funding for youth jobs and support for all these different programs that we know work? So we are really interested in, again, seeing both at a local and a state level, similar to what other folks have said, a really long-term investment in young people. We feel that here in Sacramento particularly, we're rather strong in a bunch of great nonprofits who really understand the needs of young people and programs that are successful. And as was mentioned, this sort of cyclical and unstable nature of funding makes it difficult to ever take things that work to scale and to really be able to see sort of long-term positive progress over time. And as folks mentioned, it creates a lot of competition for the scarce resources that exist, which, you know, inherently limits the innovation and folks kind of willing to work together to some degree. So we were really interested in this question. As you know, we supported your attempt at a sales tax on the county level and then at the city level in Sacramento that would have created a really wonderful pool of funding for both law enforcement as well as community-based organizations to look at how do we address this issue? And then we worked with you and the broader coalition and the Yes2You group that looked at how do we create a parcel tax? And we really still are committed to seeing some local solutions that could create some of that long-term money that would allow for us to really build on our success. Obviously, in these kinds of budget climates, the first thing that often gets cut are programs that are supporting our young people. And we feel that there's, as other folks have mentioned, the lack of prevention funding really creates a much greater cost on the suppression end of the cycle. And we'd love to reach young people as soon as possible in their elementary school career, get them on the track to being successful in education and having some other supportive programs, having caring adults in their lives, and as well as funding for those kids in high school or slightly older who have made some bad choices but are not without redemption and really able to take a different path if they're given a new opportunity and a new set of kind of eyes in terms of creating new relationships for them to see those opportunities. Pastor Eddie, who hopefully will be here soon, can talk a little bit more specifically about CEASPIRE, if he doesn't like him. And that's one specific intervention strategy. So ACT has spent a lot of time and efforts looking at sort of prevention and intervention. CEASPIRE is the most sort of direct strategy that we've launched in Sacramento and has been launched in other communities statewide, but really targets the key drivers of gang violence, around gun violence in particular. So instead of just going after sort of the broad pool, you're looking at who are the guys who are really involved in the amount of shootings that have been happening in an area? So he's going to talk a little bit more about that. Since I know one of your questions will be what will the state be able to do? I'll go into my answers for that one. For one thing, Sacramento Act and our larger state network, which is the PICO Network, we are really interested in seeing the continuation of CALPADS, the Education Data Tracking System that's finally been slowly getting in place, that we can really track dropouts and we can track how districts are doing in terms of reducing the dropout numbers. And if we're not able to continue with that system and really measure that, it's hard to have any accountability at a local or state level for the progress that we're making on that issue. So even though that's not the most exciting policy change on the surface, we really feel that it's worth the continued investment to address this bigger issue. And I think connected to that, we'd like to see a better job of tracking and reporting recidivism rates through, in juvenile justice systems. And if there's a way to shift funding, like I think a few counties have piloted, sort of towards real results and reducing recidivism, so that counties are rewarded if their students are not coming in. A manifesto ready, almost ready. So I think looking at that, since that's another issue that seems like it can be a revolving door with no consequences for counties, depending on what their recidivism rates truly are, it's hard to even find out that information. I would echo what other folks said in terms of rewarding collaborative efforts and really looking at, you know, what works and making sure that, you know, multiple people at the table is rewarded, as well as, like I've mentioned before, things that are longer term in terms of a funding cycle for people to really achieve some results. And finally, we were really disappointed to see that the Office of Gang Violence Prevention was going to be put under the Board of State and Community Corrections, I believe. So what we would like to see in response is that within that board, that there's a commission on gang prevention and intervention created that could continue to focus on sort of the core functions that that Office of Gang Violence Prevention had, which we found incredibly helpful to launching our CEASPIRE effort here. We found the leadership of Paul Sead to be really phenomenal and very smart in terms of what he was thinking about, in terms of evidence-based practices and really coordinating things on a state level, kind of working towards collaborative partnerships, de-stylating. So we'd like to see a commission that still exists to maintain sort of the core functions of that office. And that in particular would have a goal in the oversight, kind of guidance and accountability for future Cal Group funding. And we'd like to, of course, see Cal Group funding continue, which again has been incredibly useful for our CEASPIRE efforts in terms of providing services and funding from law enforcement to do this collaborative effort. So now I'll turn it over to Pastor Eddie, who can talk more specifically about CEASPIRE initiative and how it's been working and kind of what some of the fundamental principles are around that success.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. We'll come back. There are a few questions there. Welcome Pastor, we're happy to have you here. I think you're going to comment on CEASPIRE, I think that sounds like.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you for sharing. We started the CEASPIRE campaign actually in full operation in November of last year, although it took up two years in planning and development and putting the right pieces together between law enforcement, faith-based and social services here in Sacramento. And since then, we first started the South area, macro corridor area, which has been the most violent area in Sacramento with the most violent crimes between two gangs. Stars out, the coronavirus has been at it for some time. And since then, we have not had any violent crime system that moved between the two groups in that area. It's been incredible, incredible, just movement that's happening. And one of the reasons why is because of the whole opportunity approach for these other people. I think there's a stereotype, if you will, that some of these men don't want help, they're stuck in their ways, they're just looking for easily out. But we've found that many of them with provided the right opportunities do want help, do want help, do want out of the situation that they're in, the gang lifestyle, that many of them have been involved through generations. And so I believe since November, we had about five call-ins. We actually called about 112 or so. I'm not sure if you gave all those numbers yet. And 77 returned, which then actually came to the call-ins, which is an incredible rate if you look at the data throughout the United States and have similar programs. That number is very, very high for key members to actually come to the call-ins. Of those, about 38 are actually in the services, some are working, some are in school. There are some areas of the program we're seeing incredible results. And out of those, I think only four of them were actually in the program have been re-invested. And none of them have been re-invested for violent crimes, as well, two have been probation violations, parole violations, and none of them violent crimes. And so we're seeing that it works. And one of the reasons why it works, I think, is because the right people are doing this. And so I think the key to it is not just policy change, but more also an attitude change at the state level that these people do want help if there's provided opportunity for them to get home. We're seeing them just now going back, just a couple of actually going back and spreading the word to work. A lot of these youngsters, before they get called in, are going up to the police saying, "I want help, I want to be involved in CEASPIRE." They're referrals from their friends, they're not in a way for us to have call-ins, formerly they're just surrendering themselves. My church, suddenly you walk these macro corridor on Friday nights, we call them night walks, and there's about 10 churches that are actually engaged in that, different guys of the week in walking. And it's really a relationship approach to actually going out there, which has been relationships with the community, not just with the gang members, the folks in the community as well too, saying what they need and we can help them. So it's a, it's a, it's a great approach and we're seeing some incredible results. And so we really want to see this continue to be supported and funded because the data is there showing that it works. Thank you. Is that it?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. No, I think that's it. So thank you, sir.
Okay. And thank you for the description. There have been press reports that, at least the Sacramento City Police Department's funding at this point is at risk, to say the least. Can you comment on the ability to continue on with the, with the program if in fact the funding from the city police department is reduced or eliminated?
At this time, we do, because of the state Cal Group funding, have a fair amount of funding in terms of the services that we're able to offer these folks. However, and to some degree street outreach workers and a few other pieces, at this point, it would, if the gang unit was kind of severely used our ability to kind of get the information we need at the other target neighborhoods that we're looking at. So we would be kind of primarily focusing on the South area instead of the full expansion to the North area at Oak Park, which was our priority areas at this time. So it would continue, but we would probably focus mostly on the South area and try to see what other kind of resources we could build to expand, at least much slower and cut back in terms of the scope. But we would want to demonstrate that the South area was incredibly successful, that's where we'd want to focus there, because we're doing a pretty intense evaluation of that. So we'd want to be able to say, okay, well, this pilot year, we were able to maybe do as big of a range as we wanted, but here's how it really worked, here's how it's invested in the future, and from there, hopefully, expand it further.
Thanks. And going back to the attendance centers for a moment, I think you mentioned $400,000 have been realized. Was it, is that an additional ADA that you're...
Yes.
Okay. And what's the, what's the current status of the attendance centers?
I believe they are also somewhat threatened in terms of some of the funding. We've had a fair amount of federal funding, it's kind of been passed through to support them, but I think the city local piece is definitely under threat as well.
Do you think that the efforts that ACT and other organizations, both governmental and non-governmental, have been involved in Sacramento County would be assisted if there was some method for overall coordination, collaboration, priority setting with respect to the various activities and efforts?
At the state level?
Well, both at the state level and the local level. So let's divide it a bit. We should talk about, but starting with that at the local level, we've heard people speak of this, of competition for dollars, of trying to work on, essentially on their own, to try to formulate and advance a good program and keep it alive, that there are too few resources or the number of good ideas. And whoever is successful is successful, but that doesn't mean necessarily in a more objective evaluation, their program would be seen as the highest priority without making judgments. Do you think that it could help overall the efforts to further youth development and reduce youth against violence if there was some means or mechanism or a forum which helped coordinate what activities were pursued and funded and did so with some sort of strategic plan in mind at the county, at least say the county level or regional level?
Yeah, definitely. Actually, you didn't mention, but Pastor Eddie and I are both part of the effort right now to develop kind of a comprehensive youth plan in Sacramento that does look at sort of prevention intervention, similar to one of the communities that we've developed, like Salinas and San Jose. So I do think that having some kind of collective priorities makes the case for where we strategically invest and how we evaluate that long-term and how we're going to make some of those decisions. I think that that could help a lot. In terms of moving from sort of a haphazard approach to more of a coordinated effort where we could be measuring our results and our impact a little bit more effectively, which then I think allows us to make the greater case to the voters that this is worth that investment. Do you want to add anything to that?
No. And then let's talk about the state level as well. You mentioned the office being on the governor's list to be eliminated. From the assembly's point of view, we're going to take a look at this and not necessarily automatically accede to that suggestion.
Good. That'd be great.
And you have also talked about getting a counter grant for CEASPIRE. But we know there are, as you said earlier, at least six or seven different grant programs that state operates that in some way are under touchy development or using gang violence without, I'm not even including the schools.
Yeah.
And can you comment from your experiences on whether it would make more sense, be more effective to have the state also combine and coordinate those programs?
Definitely. Yeah, definitely. It seemed like Paul Sead's role was great, but he didn't have quite enough teeth in his position to sort of make some of those changes in terms of what else was going on. It did feel like he had some good strategy and thinking about some of the Cal Group money, and then there would be these other kind of grants that we would look at and say, oh wow, it'd be great if these were tweaked to support what we're actually doing. So I think that's definitely something that's come up in our whole process of saying it'd be nice if there was someone who was really looking at how all the money is kind of coordinated or supporting different aspects of the same goal instead of being kind of siloed definitely.
Anything else you wanted to add? Well, I appreciate both of you being here. Pastor, your contributions and your participation, especially of course, Ms. Ross. As you know, we've had a lot of opportunity to work together and I certainly appreciate your efforts and ACT's as well here in Sacramento County and Pico's across the state. So thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move to our next panel on finding effective strategies for supporting struggling youth and families and intervening effectively when appropriate. And we've got Mr. Darryl Roberts from the Roberts Family Development Center, Rachel Davis, Managing Director of Prevention Institute, and Lynn Borbet, who was the director, excuse me, is the director of the Sacramento Center of Prays Church, and was the Director of Office of Youth Development for the City of Sacramento. And as you're sitting down, I also do want to recognize Anna Negron. Yeah, there's Anna, from Senator Darryl Steinberg's office, who's with her at the desk. So thanks for that. And welcome to the three of you. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. You've been able to hear the others spoken before you, so you know somewhat what we're trying to focus on, those in terms of your own experiences in the community and then how we can do things better, especially in some coordinated way at the local level, but also bring together state resources in a hopefully more effective way as well. So whoever wants to go first, that's fine.
You to the panel. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I really want to commend you for including a prevention panel. It seems like all over the place, there's really an increasing recognition of the need for balanced approaches that include not only unitary enforcement and containment and intervention, but also prevention. As you said, I'm Managing Director of Prevention Institute, which is a national nonprofit organization based out of Oakland, California, where we focus on primary prevention, which is what do you do before their symptoms or problems? And we're particularly focused on fostering environments in homes, schools and communities where people can be safe and healthy. I'm also the Project Director for Unity, which stands for Urban Networks to Increase Thriving Youth, and that's a national initiative funded by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and by the California Wellness Foundation. Through that initiative here in California, we've partnered with Oakland, San Diego, Richmond and San Jose in helping support efforts to really bolster the prevention end of the continuum. And I'm also the Chair for the Advisory Board for the California Cities Gang Prevention Network, which includes 13 cities around the state. A number of years back, I also coordinated a state interat agency collaborative here in Sacramento called Shifting the Focus, which was from the late 90s to about 2002, where we were coordinating about 25 different agencies and departments who came to understand that they were all separately working on different cases of violence prevention, but there wasn't really the mechanism for figuring out how to coordinate that in support of what was going on locally. And I worked with a number of locales in California on their efforts to prevent violence, including Salinas, the City of Oxnard in partnership with Ventura County, and Alameda County. What I'm going to talk about today builds on what I've learned from those experiences. And I primarily want to talk about four things. One, that violence is preventable. Two, why it is not only a criminal justice issue, but also a health issue, but it needs to approach it from this perspective. Three, what works to prevent violence? And four, what the state can do. So there's really a strong and growing evidence base out of research and community wisdom that violence is preventable. Programs like Chicago's CEASPIRE have demonstrated 40 to 70% drops in shootings and killings and 100% drops in retaliation murders. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention released a study that showed that universal school-based violence prevention programs can reduce violence by 15% in schools in as little as six months. High-quality preschool programs have been shown significantly reduce violence, crime and arrests. But beyond programs and strategies such as these, we've also learned through our work, we did a national assessment of cities around the country where we interviewed mayors, police chiefs, public health directors and school superintendents. And what we found was that in the cities that have the greatest multi-sector coordination across those jurisdictions with other jurisdictions and with the community members, those cities and communities have lower rates of violence. So coordination matters. We also know that in cities around the state and country that are putting in coordinated efforts, that they are being successful in reducing violence. In Oakland, a city-county neighborhood initiative that's focused efforts in Sabrina Park reduced violence in that neighborhood of focus, even as the wall rates were going up in Oakland. And they focused on community capacity building and youth economic development as key strategies. San Diego saw 17% decrease in gang-related violence in 2009, and the number of gang-related homicides dropped from 21 to nine. And the key for them was combining aggressive police efforts with prevention and intervention. So for example, they extended hours at recreation centers, they employed 3,000 youth through their summer hiring program. And outside of California, we've seen significant results in other cities such as Minneapolis, which through its public health-based blueprint, has seen in the neighborhoods where they focus 62% reductions in the number of youth suspects and 52% decreases in arrests for juvenile crime. The second thing beyond that violence is preventable is that on the talk about, is that violence is not only a criminal justice issue, but it's also a health issue. It's a leading cause of injury, disability, increased or death, and it's homicide is the second leading cause of death among young people 10 to 24. For each homicide, there's approximately 1,000 non-fatal violent assaults. It's also a significant disparity disproportionately affecting young people, people of color and those living in cities. And finally, it increases the risk of other poor health outcomes such as chronic disease and mental health problems. I think the question is, why does it matter if violence is understood as a health issue? And I think it matters because if we only understand it as a criminal justice issue, we will treat it only as a criminal justice issue after the fact. If we also understand it as a health and public health issue, it allows us to focus on prevention, community and population level interventions. It expands the range of people at the table, and it allows us fundamentally to address the underlying risk and resilience factors that put individuals, families and communities at risk for violence. Things like substance abuse, failing school systems, economic deterioration, and on the other side, increasing opportunity and making sure that all young people have caring adults in their life. So what works to prevent violence? We've looked at the research and we've worked with cities in California and around the country, and we've identified a set of core strategies that need to be on the ground to prevent violence. You've heard of a number of them today. We've summarized them in the Unity Policy Platform, which I'm happy to share with you. The first thing is that communities really need strategic plans and coordinated efforts across multiple sectors, and both the plan and the coordination takes resources and attention. attention. The second is we identified a set of five strategies that would significantly reduce violence in highly impacted neighborhoods. Accommodation of street outreach and interruption in neighborhoods highly impacted by violence, universal school-based violence prevention at all schools, treating mental health, substance abuse, and reducing the prevalence of those, significantly reducing children's exposure to violence in homes and communities, and building community capacity in neighborhoods affected by violence. We also added another set of strategies that have to be prioritized at the local level that include things like youth leadership, economic development, and fostering social connections in neighborhoods. And overall, the goal is really to shift the norms in neighborhoods so that violence is not the norm in communities. But it's clear that communities can't do this alone, and state support is really helpful. And the cities we work with also identify a number of things that can be done at the state level to support what they're trying to do on the ground. Key elements include allocating and aligning resources, creating a high-level focal point for preventing violence, establishing a mechanism in state government for multi-sector collaboration, equipping people with the necessary skills with high-quality training, establishing supportive data, research, and evaluation systems, developing supportive communication campaigns, and enhancing public health infrastructure to be able to address this at the local level. The Little Hoover Commissions Report that I was just reflecting on was released 10 years ago this month, as you may recall, in the brownouts of California, so it got much less attention than I could get warranted. But the report, never too early, never too late to prevent crime and violence, I think still has a number of viable and important recommendations for the state and how the state can support local efforts. One of the things that's already been mentioned was really the asset and value of having the Office of Gang and Youth Violence Policy under the Governor, and I think it's worth revisiting having that kind of a focal point in state government. A third and emerging area is the notion of health and all policies. As you may, coming out of the Strategic Growth Council, the California Public Health Department staffs the California Health and All Policies Task Force, which represents 19 different state agencies and departments. And I think there are a few violence prevention recommendations in there. I think the new health leadership has expressed a commitment to keeping this going, and I think it represents an opportunity to really think about how do we embed violence prevention across all these different agencies that have some impact on the varying risk and resilience factors that contribute to violence. It's also an opportunity to look at how we can bridge and blend funding, how we can establish joint MOUs and RFPs, or coordinate data systems, which, all of which tend to, when they're not coordinated, become extra barriers for local communities. We included in the information a number of different recommendations to start to think about how, for example, what the Department of Corrections, or Economic Development, or Education, or Housing, or Parks and Urban Learning could all do to try to support an overall state agenda. And I think at a time right now, when obviously the budget is very problematic, of course, communities need resources to do this, but I think there are some ways to look at how to integrate those in multiple agencies so that efforts can be more coordinated and the kinds of things that communities are trying to achieve can better be accomplished. I want to just conclude, and I think just echo some of the comments that were already made, is that what young people really need is connection, identity, opportunity, and hope. And when we don't create the communities that provide those, young people turn to places where they can find that, and that's too often gangs. And it's pretty clear we know how to do it and what to do, and it really requires political will to make the changes that our young people need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. To consider that, thank you for inviting me. Okay, my name is Lynn Corbett. I'm currently Chief Executive Officer for Center of Prays Industries and former Director of Office of Government for the City of Sacramento. And you know, I thought I just kind of had a conversation about, you know, some of the things that I've noticed and just of some concerns, and then also offer some suggestions of how the state can help. You know, first and foremost, I went on before the efforts of the programs that people have mentioned, because there are some great things going on in Sacramento, and many of them being evidence-based, knowing that they have to adapt them a little to meet the needs of Sacramento, but are really seeing some positive results. So I would say the two hospital-based intervention programs, Sacramento Violence Intervention Program, also the Wraparound Project, really seeing some great results. Also the Cease Fire Project that they mentioned, and also some of the street outreach. My belief is, is that there's still many silos that exist out there. So really, we're talking about the end. You know, we're talking about reaching out to these youth after they've already been involved in something and then as you're really not talking about prevention at all. And people we talk to, hey, this kid's at risk, let's reach at risk. I believe they're all at risk, and I believe it's our responsibility to kind of do something and to look at it a little bit more closely on the coastal side of it. So for example, when you talk about, hey, let's have a conversation about this, you'll see that there are many parties left out. For example, you'll miss, a lot of after-school programs won't be in attendance, and in fact, they're the ones that can learn more from it because they're the ones that are pretty soon to reach out of their programs. And in fact, also, a lot of the youth who particularly are left out, I mean, it's very, very difficult to have a conversation without having several youth in the room that could really tell them what's going on, because I think that many of our communities, and many of us, suffer from disconnect. I mean, we think we know what kind of happened, we guessing that this is what's going on, but the reality is that sometimes when you sit down, you don't have an idea of what's really going on, and really, you're shocked by it. And I think it's important to make sure that we continually show we're involved in this discussion. When we talk about some of the positive programs out there that really have had some other results out there, that are not just specifically focused on the youth gang violence, there are a couple initiatives that, you know, I've done and I've seen in the past that have been really effective. First one I want to speak about is on, you know, asset-based community development, and stop looking at and saying, okay, let's bring specific models, and it has opposed to looking at the people in the community, the people knowing the community and empower them to kind of do more. So with that, this asset-based community development, you're really looking at the assets that are existing in the community. So I'll refer to like a lady who plays piano, or she does something, she does it, she's been doing so many things. She has the reach of time sometimes, she may not have the resources, but we're looking at, hey, how do we fund an organization to do something, literally for smaller amounts to help with either food, or books, or paper, or anything along those lines, a small amount of funding could all along the way with what she can do in the community. And there are many, many people that can do that. I'll give you an example, last summer, what we did was we put a program out called the Summer of Fun, where we just told anybody, give us any grant opportunities that you would like, up to $500, we wanted to take you anywhere. And it didn't have to be based on an organization. So somebody sent up and said, hey, well, we've actually asked to partner with organizations, but it didn't happen. So this guy said, hey, I want to take kids to go fishing, partner with Boys and Girls Club. He took 15 kids fishing, and on his grant request, it was for fishing poles and bait. I mean, not a whole bunch that we spent, but kids had a great experience. So it's the little things like that where you're saying, hey, rather than something about, hey, how can I give this jurisdiction money, or you can give this organization money, just look at it a little bit and change it a little bit, because the reality is a hundred dollars really goes a long way for a bunch of kids just sitting outside having a good time. So and I'll talk a little bit about more about the paradigm shift and the mind shift a little bit later, but I also want to talk about some of the beacon model, the beacon programs, where you open up buildings like this, where you allow organizations to come in and utilize them. Now, a lot of the jurisdictions are saying, hey, we need to partner more with nonprofits to allow them to use our buildings. But the issue is, they're looking at it as, how do we get through this economy? So they're saying, hey, let me let this organization rent the building for a year. It takes about a year to get staff really up to speed and to know what they need. So the reality is, they're looking at it, but let me bring this nonprofit and let them use it for 40 years, maybe the economy will turn and we can kick them out, as opposed to saying, hey, let's start from scratch and say, what can we do with this building? How can we allow nonprofits to use it? And a beacon program is just one model where they give it to a nonprofit, and they give them a source of funding stream, and nonprofits encourage to bring other people into the building. So they partner with other nonprofits, partner with families, but it's also community-based, because more times than not, being in that community, you kind of know the needs of the community a little bit more, and then you can come up with strategies that really go to work, and the people in the community respect it a little bit more because they know. So I was the Director of the Beacon Program in New York City back in the late 80s, early 90s, and it was a program that we just said, okay, what do you want to do for this community? And then we were able to bring other nonprofits in there and offer the kids and the families suggestions on how to make that work also. So when I talk about the paradigm shift, I'm thinking in my mind that if you can start saying that, okay, let's figure out how do we kind of cut this program, as opposed to asking the question, what program do we need, I think that we'll be in a little bit better situation. So if I say I have X amount of dollars, what program do we need and what are we going to do, as opposed to now, this is getting cut, and then this is getting cut, and then it's like, hey, we almost have a proper meal program. And the reality is, is that sometimes even for less money, that you could have the program if you just looked at it a little bit differently the first time. As I mentioned with the mini-grants and the other programs like that also. So in my thoughts, what is some things that the state can do, first and foremost, is keeping the conversation going, open and maintain the dialogue going also. And as Bishop Allen mentioned, the faith-based community is often kind of left out, and in fact, a lot of times they're invited only when somebody says, hey, we should have a faith-based leader at the table. And the reality is, is that there's a number of different strategies they can utilize, and they have a number of different people in their congregation that really want to step up and help, but the answer of the how is left out. And in fact, when they say, hey, let's focus on youth and gay violence alone, without thinking about all the other strategies mentioned, about thinking about it as a bigger umbrella, a lot of times they try and do a little bit, and again, it helps that individual kid, but a lot of times those kids are left out. I've been to a number of different radio programs facilities, a number of different events that are going on, and the kids that really you want them, they're still down the street. And the reality is, nobody reached out to them, nobody told them what was going on, nobody even, and then the times that they do reach out to them, a lot of times they don't have the resources or the needs that they can have to do what they need to do. I'd also like to make sure that as you keep these conversations going, you keep them local and you keep them in the community. So I apologize for having you here, because the reality is, is that with the disconnect, when you have it somewhere else, you still might get the right people in the room and have the conversation, although sometimes you still have to reach out to the right people, even in the community, to make sure that they come out also. It's kind of hard to talk about the funding. As you know, it should be, as everybody mentioned before, it should be a long-term funding. Again, a year is not enough, two years often is not enough. But the other thing is, is that nonprofit 101 is, is that, you know, any organization depends on a single source of funding, because organizations destined to fail. So the reality is, is that even then we say that, hey, you know, what we're going to give, we're going to go after this source of funding for, we should be looking at several sources of funding for it. It should make sure that you're including a number of different initiatives, from a private, the local, the tax initiative, and there are just several. But when you only have a discussion about one, even when you do get that source of funding, it goes away really quickly. And if you talk to a lot of people who have had the measures, that money goes away pretty quickly because it's being split by number of entities. I'd also think that from a state perspective, I can also encourage people to open up their buildings also. I've been in the communities, particularly in Sacramento, where we go by a community center, and people are hanging outside. The community center closed about 7:00 or 8:00 p.m. So the kids are hanging outside a closed building, which, you know, I gotta say, it's just, you know, a problem there, because they're outside, the lights are shut off. There's really not a lot going on, and the same thing in schools also. So I encourage them to open up past later hours and keep them open later, where I'm not saying that, hey, let's do midnight programs, I'm saying let's do programs that strategize and organize them around an entity that you have, which is a distinct area. Also, looking at some of the, there are some restrictions when they are in the buildings sometimes, often that they can't fundraise, or particularly they can't charge at times, and a lot of times nonprofits, that's all they need to fundraise. And to say, hey, you know, this law, this regulation says that if you can't fundraise or have any fundraising activities there for a nonprofit, often at times that causes a significant barrier. I find that sometimes they're also renting, they're renting it out, saying that, hey, you know, they said, hey, we're going to put an RFP out to allow nonprofits to come. Not that many come, because the reality is, they know that it's not going to be long-term. So they're not going to come into a community or expand and move into a building, knowing that their fate is uncertain, they're not sure if it's going to be a year, two years, three years of what's going to happen, so sometimes that's often very challenging. Also facilitating learning communities, I think it's very, very important to make sure that we continue to learn from other entities in the state of California, and Calp, was initiative that brought many people together, the Office, the Governor's Office of Gang Prevention brought people together, 13 cities, and brought people together, that you're learning so much, and from strategies that have been tested and work, and if you can continue to facilitate those discussions, that'd be important also. So again, I think that those are much greater things that I thought about, and I'm always open to offering assistance that I can.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Dale Roberts, Co-Founder, CEO of Roberts Family Development Center, honored to be a part of this particular panel with a policymaker on one end, a policymaker and a practitioner in the middle, and myself, community-based organizer, as well as provider of services. For the last 10 years, the Roberts Family Development Center has been a part of the North Sacramento community. The last three years, as you're noticing, we brought in beyond North San, also sort of the downtown area, as well as the suburban area near the river. Our exact purpose to get started was really to assist families of at-risk children, and Mr. Corbett's right, our kids are at risk, but it was the at-risk children in North Sacramento we first started to begin working with, and those families. Went to that community and surveyed, talked to the residents about what they wanted to see happen, one of the things that they talked about was the lack of youth activities in the community. My wife, Tina and I put together a strategy, came back to the community, talked to some of the electors, including yourself, about what they thought made sense there, and was the creation of the Roberts Family Development Center. But quite frankly, the Roberts Family Development Center started probably 50-plus years ago in New Orleans, Louisiana, and that's when I was, where I originally came from. And the reason I say came from that, it was that community which taught me that at-risk children and high-risk children do exist as part of that community, all need the same thing, caring adults, structured activity, and people who cared about them. And when I say caring adults, and the difference between that and people who care about them, caring adults typically are parents. We exclude fortunate parents out of the discussion when we talk about how to reach youth involved in gang activities. Many people say, well, those are the kids whose parents really have not gotten involved and never gotten involved. Truth of the matter is, those are the kids whose parents typically have not been asked to participate until it was far too late, and the issues were so dramatic that they didn't feel equipped to be able to help. What we tried to do at the Roberts Family Development Center is really some of the best things that I've learned in the St. Bernard projects where I grew up, and that is that providing a safe environment for young people was tantamount to giving them a safe place, a place where they could be safe. A safe, structured environment was key. In our communities, too many of the safe, structured environments that we thought about over the years are being closed. We continue to talk about the cutback in community centers, cutback in hours, and leading to community-based organizations. I'm very fortunate, and I think after three or four years of talking with Lynn, it is true that if a nonprofit or community-based organization is only looking at one funding source, whether it be state, federal, or local, it really won't survive. So for us, it really has been the fact that we have diversified our funding sources. Challenges that others have not been able to overcome, we've been able to overcome. We've been fortunate that we continue to grow organization, although it's been a challenge and a struggle, we continue to serve. Today, we serve more than 250 kids on a daily basis at three different locations, including one in the junior high schools between the Division of High School District. Throughout the year, we touched another 5, 250 kids, a total of 500 students through tutorial environment, tutorial opportunities. For us, that is the approach, early intervention and education to resolve and making sure that students are not involved in ball, in gang initiatives, in gang activities. Our holistic approach, as I said, really involves the parents, trying to get them involved. At the center, we do regular parent meetings, we work with local school districts, hold parent conferences, because we think that until we start involving more and more of the community that is most affected, I think Reverend Allen said it best, so many of our young kids' parents go to the churches, but are we talking to the churches about working with them? So many of our children are failing in school, and those are the students that we talk about we need to work with, but are we really bringing those students in before the start process? How early are we talking to them? Should be involved in earlier? Yes, the answer is yes. At our center... At our center, we've taken that motto that it takes an entire village to raise a child, but we recognize that the home of a child is the first place where we must have rest. We continue to talk to those parents, those adults in the family, and try to make them understand that it's their responsibility to get involved on a regular basis. Our partnership with the police department and others, well documented. I'll also tell you that there have been times when I've been frustrated. And my frustration tends to come when I feel like initiatives get started, and within two or three years, they end. Unfortunately, that has been a track record in our city, and even in our county. Again, we're happy to have Lynn next to us. The truth of the matter is that Lynn's position and the Office of Youth Development has been eliminated. If you hear what he's saying and the conversation that he had across the board, there really isn't need for integrated services. We have not focused a concerted effort for long enough time to really see the common results that we can see. Cease fire, other initiatives that we have out there are, can work. But we must take the time that it takes for us to integrate the community into these efforts. It does us no good for every six months to move from one community to the other. And part of that has to do with funding concerns. Everybody's concerned, well, where is the funding going to come from? So we end up chasing dollars. All of us are guilty of that, but more importantly, I think, we need to take a concerted effort for us to stop that. And our center, one of the things that we've tried to do, and again, it's nothing different than what others are trying to do, we do it on a regular basis, exposing our students. Exposing students to opportunities that are out there, whether the colleges, towards colleges, opening them up to other opportunities, taking them on job shadowing, making sure that they recognize their opportunities out there. And Lynn is right, it takes a lot to go outside of your comfort zone to bring their kids who are most at-risk, the high-risk students. That's why we're working right now in the housing complexes, recognizing that, you know, sending more Sacramento made to some of our risk kids. We have some high-risk kids in the housing complexes who are not being served. I recognize we're one of the few organizations that are in the housing complexes other than some of the agencies that are there, citywide agencies. But it's important that community-based organizations continue to be partnered with when we go into the high-risk communities where high-risk students are living. The work that we have tried to do has also been centered around the family, because we recognize that you have to include the families of our children if you're planning to change their behaviors. Lynn talked about a paradigm shift in terms of funding and the thinking that pertains to policymakers and others. I think there has to be a paradigm shift as it pertains to our community. Our community cannot continue to look at others as the way to resolve the problems in the community. We need to look inwardly in those communities, work with leaders in those communities and potential leaders, build them up to give them an opportunity to serve and deal with the problems that exist. The, you were asking earlier about what can be done. I'm an after-school provider, Lynn was right. Most often, except, affected by the fact that I'm in other areas, I get invited to the meetings that most of the after-school providers don't get invited to. Quite frankly, most of the after-school providers are underfunded. And I look at the model that we use in terms of the after-school programs, and we recognize that you have a twenty-to-one ratio for certain children. We realize that these guys are just overworked. Our model is different, because we've chosen as an organization to run a different model. So a one-to-twelve, one-to-ten ratio is what we do, but that's not typical. So if you ask me, you know, what can I do differently? Look at the funding model that's in place that's coming to our after-school programs. Figure out a way for us to inject dollars that will allow... We're talking about the kids who are most at-risk of failing in school. That's who we typically traditionally direct to the after-school programs. But still, normally, we take a one-to-twenty model, as if we don't recognize, even in the classroom, one-to-twenty is not working for a lot of teachers. These are college students who are working with our students when we're lucky enough to have college students there. So the asking, what else can be done? I look at that, people have talked about policy and things like that. But from a practical standpoint, I see that some of the way we do funding has been rethought, starting some of the after-school programs that are in place, are trying to do the best job they can. But many of them are simply overwhelmed. And quite frankly, many of the reasons they're not into, they're not involved in many of the outside discussions, is they don't see a place. Not only do they not see a place, they don't necessarily have the funding to do that. We've made the conservative efforts to do that. I applaud those who are trying, and also applaud you for the efforts that you do.
Thank you all three. I think you provided distinct but very much overlapping perspectives on the subject. And in particular, I think that the need for coordination comes strikingly through, and extending the reach of who's included in the efforts that we undertake. I also think that the point that you made about not waiting till we find a child or family as at-risk to do something is actually quite a profound point that we miss all too often. Instead of focusing on our efforts to make sure that kids don't become at-risk, we wait for those indicators and then say, oh, we better do something about it. I wanted to, Ms. Davis, ask you a follow-up on your comment about coordination in places where you've observed it. And I'm just curious whether you've seen any on as much as a county-wide or regional basis. You talked about some coordination, but at least I interpret it as targeting neighborhoods or parts of the city, something in that vein. I'm wondering if you've seen something actually expanded on a geographic basis as broadly as an entire county or even region?
I've seen a little bit of it. It's been, I think, challenging. Right now, the work that the City of Oxnard is doing in partnership with the County of Ventura, I think, is a model to look at. But they're in their early developmental stages. But the coordinating body, the chair, the chairs include folks from the city council and the Board of Supervisors. And they've got a lot of city and county folks at the table and community-based organizations. So I think they started from the beginning with everybody at the table, and I think that that's been one of the reasons why the conversations have been able to go forward. And now they have a blueprint that's both been adopted by the city council and whatever the equivalent of that is with the Board of Supervisors. So that's one example. In our region county, I think we've had less success in sort of the traction. There's been a county-wide blueprint for a while. And figuring out, particularly on the prevention end, what it means for a county that's using more of a social sort of safety end is more challenging. But in the places where there has been that coordination, such as in the city-county initiative, which has included city and some limited number of county agencies, there has been some success there. But I think it's, I think that the model is parallel in cities, where you have to have sort of high-level leadership demanding accountability. And sometimes that's harder when, you know, there's five members or nine members of the Board of Supervisors, and there isn't one, you know, one office. So I think it presents challenges. And we've been trying to identify sort of what are, what is the role of the county? And I think there are certainly roles in terms of convening, in terms of coordinating, in terms of the community practice piece and the learning piece, you know, bringing together different jurisdictions. But it's, I don't think it's been fully realized yet in terms of the opportunity it presents.
Well, thanks for the example. I'll certainly pursue that. And your comments about counties are interesting, obviously, particularly to me with my background. But when you think of so much of child welfare services being directed in California through county agencies, whether it's Department of Human Assistance, or Health and Human Services, or on the corrections side of probation, and certainly traditional law enforcement in our incorporated areas, coming through county sheriffs, it's actually inconceivable that, and to me, that you could successfully have a coordinated approach across any geographic area without heavy and deep involvement by county agencies because of that responsibility that they bear for child welfare. So it does take leadership from some source, but it's leadership that ought to be forthcoming, I think, from each of our counties. And Mr. Corbett, I wanted to come back. I was struck by your comments about kids standing outside closed buildings like this one, as an example. And it makes me wonder if we ought not to be engaging much more with organized labor, with insurance agencies, those kinds of entities that have a role to play and a voice in whether we can keep buildings open and keep them functioning, as well as the people that tend to think of automatically like city council members and city administrators.